Good, hey, good evening. Welcome, happy holidays to board members, staff, applicants, members of the public. This is the December 17th, 2024 meeting of the City of Bangor's Planning Board. My name is Reese Perkins, I'm chairman of the board. Other board members in attendance this evening are Vice Chair Ted Brush, Jonathan Boucher, Tricia Hayes, and Janet Jonas. We thank them for their volunteer from the Bangor community. City staff members in attendance this evening include Planning Officer Anya Colette, Assistant Solicitor Grace Innis, and Planning Analyst Brian Skinnell. We also thank them for what they do to set this meeting up and get us ready for all of this. So we'll go right to old business. Before I get to the introduction, the chair's typical introduction, I'll go right to old business. We have meeting minutes from December 3rd, 2024. Planning Board members, do we have any concerns or comments on those minutes? And if not, I would look for a motion to approve those minutes as they are. Member Jonas?
Chair, I move that the board approved the meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2024 as presented by the staff.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that? Member Brush, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so we have unanimous approval of the meeting minutes for December 3rd, 2024 as they were presented to us. The next item of old business is an update on the council votes. Two votes, zone change for 34 Birch Street and 74 Allen Street. This is just because we asked staff to kind of do this for us, and there was nothing exciting about that. They did approve both of those changes. I'll ask staff, I mean, if we have any comments on that? Nothing else, right? Approved, it was as it was, and as we voted for it. So that's that, and that is old business for this evening. Now going to new business, we do not have any zone change requests or amendments to the code, so we're going to go right to land development permits. And I will now do my typical introduction of what the board does. We serve as regulatory authority for land development permits, commonly known as site plan review. Site plans are reviewed to ensure compliance with city code as to parking, driveways, stormwater management, lighting, et cetera, as applicable. We also ensure the plan meets the dimensional requirements for the projects in only district. We review larger site plans that trigger site location development for the main DEP as well, under their requirements. Some uses are conditional uses that have specific conditions and requirements we use to review the project. State statute also outlines the requirements for subdivision review, and the city has additional standards as to roadway and utility specifications. The board ultimately endorses a plan that will go to the registry of deeds if the plan is approved. Information on the city's codes and standards can be found on the city's website. When the applicant is asked to present their project or proposal, they or their representatives should come forward to the podium and provide a brief introduction to their application. Once the presentation has been made, the applicant should stay at the podium while we consider any questions from the board and from the staff, and then the applicant may be seated. We will next open the floor to public comments. If there are any comments from the public, we ask that the person come to the podium, unless they're on Zoom, of course. We ask that they introduce themselves, state where they're from, and indicate if they are for or against the proposal. Either way, it is helpful if they present their thoughts based upon the city code, as this is the primary document we use to make our decision as a board. If you're on Zoom, please use the raised hand function to let us know you would like to speak, and we can bring you into the meeting. All comments and discussion should remain respectful and considerate of all others. Once public comment is completed, we will close that item to public comments. The board will then deliberate on the proposal using the standards as applicable and act on the proposal. Standards will be read and voted on separately as required. Once the standards are reviewed, a decision will be read and voted on. Once a project you are interested in has been reviewed, feel free to leave the meeting. You don't have to stick around, but please be respectfully quiet so that we can proceed with the other items on the agenda. Before we begin our permit reviews this evening, we need to make all permit applicants, and I think we have three separate applicants kind of here, three separate groups. Is that right? Round of heads, good. By code, you are allowed to postpone your application to a later meeting because we do not have a full contingent of seven board members. There are five of us here this evening. And so I give you the opportunity for that, and you're welcome to ask questions if you would like to. As a minimum, I would like to hear from each applicant that they are okay to proceed with the meeting this evening with the five board members, or not if you would prefer to wait. Do any of you have any questions with that regard? I mean, it's just simply a courtesy, you know, in case you really feel like you want to have seven board members reviewing your application. And I see kind of a shake of the head, no. I would like someone from each group to come up to the podium and just say you're okay with that. Anyone for us to make some difference? Yeah?
Reese, one's online. Adam is the representative.
Okay, great, thank you.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you still have a forum, correct?
We have a forum.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a name, please?
Keith Ewan, concrete engineer.
Of course, thank you. I'm not sure.
Chip Haskell, payment board.
Okay, thank you. And we have Adam Wolfrey on Zoom. Adam, did you catch what we were talking about? And would you want to unmute and just let us know if you're okay with proceeding this evening with your application? That would be great.
So my only question is, with the five members there, will you guys be able to make a decision on the filing that I'm presenting?
Yes.
That I have no issues?
Okay, thank you. All right, so everyone has let us know that they would like to proceed this evening, so we will get right to the land development permit applications. The first one is a site development plan for upgrades to the T-Mobile cell site on top of the Bangor Aviator Hotel, also known as the Sheridan Four Points. This is property located at 308 Godfrey Boulevard, map lot 001001C, in the Airport Development District. The agent is the gentleman who just spoke, Adam Wolfrey. The applicant is T-Mobile LLC, and the owner is the City of Bangor. Staff has indicated the completeness of this application and that it is ready for board review. Fees are documented and paid. Applicant standing is confirmed. We did have some additional documentation that was sent to us in that regard.
Yeah, it was just a documentation showing that the owner of the hotel that this is located on approves this, they're okay with it.
This project, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions or concerns about the completeness of the application? Seeing none. Any concerns with conflict of interest as well? I would assume board members would speak up if you did. If not, I would ask for a motion on the application completeness, which board members will find in their packet under procedural background. Member Boucher?
I move the application was deemed complete on December 17th, 2024. The applicant paid all applicable fees, Exhibit 3, and the proposed project is a minor site development.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that? Member Jonas, thank you. And a roll call vote on that? Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so we have voted for application completeness to proceed with the review of the application. So the next step here would be for Mr. Wolfrey to go ahead and give us a little brief introduction to your project. I mean, we have all our information in the packet, but it's still nice to just hear from you, and if you could do that, and then we'll go to comments and questions for you.
Sure. I'll do a brief summary of T-Mobile's proposed work. So my name is Adam Wolfrey. I'm the authorized agent for T-Mobile. T-Mobile is proposing to remove three antennas, three TMAs, one cabinet, and six coax lines at the cell site. Additionally, they're proposing to install six new antennas, three new radioheads, two cabinets, a slack box, equipment that goes inside the cabinets, and then three new hybrid cables. I want to point out that the scope of work does stay within the guidelines of the 6409 regulations, meaning that the height of the antennas, it's not increasing. The footprint of the actual cell site isn't changing, and the number of antennas doesn't go beyond the allowable number of antennas in the 6409 regulations, which is 12. There would be, with the proposed work, there would only be nine antennas at the cell site.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Staff comments?
I just want to clarify, because this is kind of a unique application. Typically, replacing equipment, cell equipment wouldn't need planning board approval, but for this particular one, they didn't actually receive planning board approval for the original equipment.
Yeah.
So that's what they need approval for in order to proceed with replacing their equipment. So because they are already there, a lot of things in the code aren't really applicable. So the main things that staff looked at were the setbacks and height of the equipment that they're proposing, and then also showing that they have FCC approval. So it was really just a couple of things in the code.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Board member questions for the applicant's representative?
Just a quick one. I wasn't familiar with one of the terms that...
Mr. Wolfrey?
Mr. Wolfrey used, slack.
He was talking about slants, wasn't he?
I thought he said slack. It's a cabinet replacement for coax.
Mr. Wolfrey, did you cast that question?
About the slack box?
Yes, what is that?
It contains the fiber wires. It's like a box that the fiber wires run through.
Okay, okay, so it's cabinet.
In essence, a conduit box?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the age of the building. Do you know the age of the building?
I do not.
I was somewhat concerned, the structural reports in our packet, and there were some comments in the structural report. I think TEP Northeast produced that report, and they had made some comments such as existing equipment platform drawings weren't available at the time of the analysis. They assumed that the equipment platform is located over bearing walls and columns, and that they have sufficient capacity, but they really didn't seem to verify that. And there were a couple of other comments in that regard, sort of, we don't know, but we're assuming everything is okay type comments. I was a bit concerned with that. Can you comment on that at all? And I guess, you know, where I sort of go with some of that is that you described in the roof structure, or someone in this, I think it was in the structural report, but there was a description of this roof structure as originally being, I think, a gravel roof, and then a second roof membrane or roofing structure was added. So it sounds like it's kind of a double roof. Probably there was some leaking that occurred, so now you've got additional weight, and then you've got your equipment on top of it. And if the engineer is just saying they really don't know whether they're on bearing walls or things like that, it just seems a little dicey engineering-wise, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. And there was pre, there were pre-tensioned cables in the original concrete. If it's, say, 25 years old, often pre-tensioned cables wear over time and become weak. And it didn't seem as there was any real thought given to that, all of which then led to, in the final loading analysis, it was pointed out that the loads that are now on the roof structure are almost the same as the allowable loads, which didn't leave a whole lot of safety factor. Can you comment on that?
Well, as you pointed out, the proposed equipment does roughly weigh the same thing as the equipment that is currently there. As far as the structural analysis, not going into detail about the supports of the roof, unfortunately, I would have to go back to the engineer to get more information, but I do know that the proposed equipment does weigh very close to what the equipment is there, which is why the engineer had less of a concern about the proposed work in the structural analysis.
Okay, thank you. Does, do our engineering people look at this one at all?
I don't know that they typically look at this. I think it's something that code would look at when they do their permitting, because they do have to go to code for permits. I know that when we had discussed rooftop equipment before, I asked them about, you know, if they looked at wind loading and things like that, and they do. So I would think they also look at the structural.
Is it the city's building?
No, so the city, another clarification, the city owns the parcel, but the hotel leases that hotel area, and the hotel owner owns the hotel.
Owns the building. I know, Mr. Wolfrey, that there was some information in the packet, which I didn't really get into in detail, but I think there was something along the lines of an agreement between the hotel and T-Mobile insurance-wise, so if anything were ever to happen, that somebody would be, somebody's insurance company would resolve the issue, let's say. Let's say there's some cracking that happens. Can you speak to that at all? Do you know how that would work?
So, I mean, that would be worked out between the owner and T-Mobile, and it also, as far as like liability, it would have to be investigated if there's a crack in the rooftop. I know T-Mobile does have their equipment up there, but it doesn't necessarily mean that their equipment would be causing that crack. You know, if they do an investigation and they figure out that, yeah, T-Mobile's equipment did cause the crack, then, yeah, T-Mobile would be liable for paying for the damages. But there would be a very detailed investigation in that type of situation.
There's no way we could...
So there's nothing in the land development code that really speaks to this? It's more of a building code requirement?
But there's no way we could ask for something to ensure us that structurally this was... I was just really concerned with some of the engineering things that they've just, it looks like they've just said, well, we assume it's okay. And to me, that's not really typical engineering, and I would ask for something in documentation, but I'm not even sure what I would ask for.
Yeah, that's the tricky part, because we do have to be specific if there's a condition.
If there's a condition. Any other board member comments before I go to public comments?
A question.
Member Boucher?
Yeah, just a question. What's the reason for changing the equipment? Is it, is the equipment just aged out? Is there a reason?
So, a couple of years ago, T-Mobile and Sprint merged, and as a result, they had more clientele in close vicinity to that cell site. So they've been doing this nationally with each of their cell sites. They don't do all the cell sites at once, but after some time, they've picked this cell site to upgrade the equipment so they can handle the increase in the customer base in close vicinity to the cell site. So it's more of a capacity thing.
Good, good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, I'll open this up to public comments. I'm not sure we have, I don't see any hands raised. I see nobody on Zoom. So going one, two, three, I'm going to close public comments. Before we go to motions on the standards, the board members have anything else that they want to discuss? If not, we can go to standards, and so the standards start with Part 1, discussing the project meeting requirements for Articles 2 through 12. And so I would look for a motion on item 1, Part 1. Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibit 6, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-58, requiring compliance with federal aviation regulations.
Thank you, a second on that. Member Hayes, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. A motion on item 2. Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibit 6, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-80.1A3 regarding consistency with applicable FCC regulations.
Thank you, a second on this one. Member Boucher, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Item 3, do I have a motion on item 3? Member Boucher?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibit 6, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-80.1C4 regarding written approval by applicable state and federal agencies.
Thank you. Member Hayes, you had your hand up too. Do you want a second?
Sure.
Thank you, so roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item 3. Member Hayes?
Four.
I'm sorry, four. I looked at four and said three. Thank you.
I move the board finds that based on Exhibits 2, 5, and 6, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-80.1G through H regarding setbacks from property lines and height of the equipment.
Thank you, a second on this one. Member Jonas, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So unanimous approval of all items under Part 1. That was items 1 through 4. And so moving on to Part 2, requiring the project to meet the district site development standards under Article 19. The board, I'm sorry, I look for a motion on this rather than reading it. Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits 2 and 5, the applicant satisfied Section 165-135 of the Land Development Code regarding height limits and rooftop mechanical equipment.
Thank you. And Member Brush, you had your hand up too. Do I have a second on that? Thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so unanimous approval of Part 2. Part 3, requiring the project to meet Section 165-95 Airport Development District. Do I have a motion on Part 3? Member Boucher?
I move the board finds that based on the findings made in Parts 1 and 2 of Section 4 of this document, based on Exhibit 2, the project needs the requirements of Section 165-95B for permitted use within the Airport Development District.
Thank you. And Member Hayes, you had your hand up. You have a second there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous approval of Part 3. Moving on to Part 4, which requires the project to meet Section 165-114, the land development approval standards. Do I have a motion on Part 4? Member Hayes?
I move the board finds that based on Exhibit 2, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-114G's requirements for location and setbacks.
Thank you. And Member Brush, a second on that?
Second.
Yep, thank you. And a roll call vote on Part 4. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Before we get to the decision, I have a question for Planning Officer Colette. So just going through the standards, I realize that really it's not a demand of us to understand the structural implications anyway, right?
Correct.
Thank you. So I would look for motion on the decision. Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that the project meets the requirements for a land development permit for a minor site development, and therefore grants the land development permit for the proposed project.
Thank you. Member Jonas with a second, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous approval of all items and the decision, so the land development permit is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wolfrey.
Thank you.
And so with that, we will move on to the next item. In case anyone has any questions, if your permit gets approved, the next step, I believe, go to the code enforcement office?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So the next item under land development permit applications is a minor subdivision modification for temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement to facilitate new building on adjacent parcel at property located at 57 Birchwood Avenue, map lot R14-187 in Urban Residence District 1. The agent is Dale Ward, Mr. Chip Haskell, and the applicant is Penobscot Christian School Association, Chair of Allison Hamilton. The owner is Noah El Verisco. Before we get the applicant's representative to come up, the staff has indicated completeness of this application and that it is ready for board review. Fees are documented and paid. The applicant's standing is confirmed. Again, we had additional documentation on that...
The owner approval of the application.
Owner's acceptance of the application. Thank you. And so that's really included in our review. Does the board have any concerns with completeness or conflicts of interest? Seeing none, then I would look for a motion on completeness, which is in the procedural background. Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board agrees the application was deemed complete on December 17th, 2024. The applicant paid all applicable fees according to Exhibit 3. The proposed project is a minor subdivision modification with amendment of the subdivision plan, and the plat was reviewed by the engineering department, and a written report was issued from the city engineer on December 10th, 2024, as displayed in Exhibit 11.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Brush, thank you. And so roll call vote on application completeness. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we are good with the application completeness, so Chip, come on up and just give us a little summary of what's happening.
Absolutely. Evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Chip Haskell, Dale Ward, representing Penobscot Christian and the Veriscos tonight. Veriscos being the owner, Penobscot Christian being the applicant here. Some of you, hopefully all of you, may recall, back in August or September, I was up here with the application for Penobscot Christian School and their new facility, which on this plan is just on the south side of the actual subdivision. In that plan, at the time, we hadn't approached the Veriscos yet. We had shown all utilities passing all the way through that sort of very long site, all the way back to Ohio School. In that plan, we envisioned, you know, the possibility of accessing utilities off of Birchwood Avenue, and put a note on that plan that, you know, to that effect, that if that was, you know, realized in the future, we'd be back before you doing this very thing. So that has happened. We would like to get a temporary construction easement to install utilities, number one, and then a permanent utility easement through the Veriscos property from Birchwood Avenue down to the new facility. So that's about it.
That's the summary of it, all right.
Hopefully relatively benign as far as application.
All right. Thanks, Chip. Hang off with us here for a second, and we'll see if there's any questions for you. Planning Officer Colette?
No comments.
Staff comments? Okay, thank you. Board members, questions for the applicant's rep? Member Jonas?
First of all, thank you for finding an alternate way other than going through the wetlands. That was great. We appreciate that. But my question is for potential future use of this particular property, the Verisco's property. They may or may not live there forever, and so when that property conveys and this permanent easement is still there, when it breaks, because water lines do have...
because water lines do eventually break, particularly mine.
Sure.
How does a future owner rectify that? Is that the owner's responsibility? Or is that the school's responsibility? And is that clear with the arrangements that's being made with the permanent easement?
Sure. It's the, it's the user's responsibility to maintain the utility that they have in that easement. And that easement is recorded, you know, in, in that, in that deed for the Verisco property. So any future owner of that property would, you know, that would be part of any sort of due diligence or title search that would be on that property. So that would be, you know, certainly discovered as part of that if it wasn't disclosed. But that easement would be there. There's actually another story on the property already crossing through there.
Right.
As it turns out, but yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other board members questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Chip, I think we're all sort of right now. Thank you. So before we get to standards, um, any public comments? I'll open this up to public comments to see if there are any public comments. Oh, yes, sir. You wanna come on up?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the aesthetics.
Hold on a second. If you would just come up to the podium and introduce yourself and then go ahead and ask your question. Thank you.
I'm David Bragg. I live on Birchwood Avenue and just wanna know what the aesthetics are gonna be on the property that you're gonna change.
Sure.
Okay.
May come up here some more time.
Thank you. Sure, Chip. Come on. Thank you, David.
Yeah, we would, we would end up, um, I'm not aware if there's any vegetation in that section at the moment, but any vegetation within that thirty-foot easement, you know, that would be necessitated to clear for construction would be cleared. We would have to maintain, you know, not having trees planted over the top of that maintenance for, obviously, the purposes of that, not, you know, causing issues with that main. But, um, it would be up to the owner of that property to, you know, suppose they could have a lawn or ultimately it needs to be maintained so that woody vegetation isn't going up over the top of it.
So what's gonna be far as wires and things? Is it gonna be underground?
Oh, it's underground. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's the only easement is, uh, or permanent easement for that purpose?
Yeah, I mean, there's a temporary easement for construction that's a little wider than the utility easement, just to have the equipment in there to actually dig the trench. But after that, it's just a permanent utility easement. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Thanks, Chip. Okay, any other just public comments?
Yeah, I'm Sharon. Sorry, I just got out of work. So I was curious about, uh, I live with David, he's my husband. We just bought the place and we thought we had a nice backyard. And now when we look, we're watching the construction. And we're curious about, like, is there gonna be a fence around there?
Sure.
Current construction that's going on, like, to the school, is there gonna be some kind of privacy?
Sure. Is that your only question?
Yeah.
Okay, good. If you wanna sit down, Chip, come on back up and answer that question as well.
Yeah.
Um, and just so you're aware, um, because it sounds like you came in kind of on the late end of this
Yeah.
project, um, the, the board reviewed, as I think Chip alluded to, uh, that we reviewed this project previously as a planning board. So a lot of these questions and a lot of this conversation we had prior to this. And it's unfortunate if you didn't know about this, uh, before, but that's not something that we can, you know, you know, make sure of. But anyway, Chip would be happy to answer your questions as best as he could. We've already fencing around the property and so forth.
Yeah, absolutely. And, um, if it helps, I mean, this, this question was certainly asked, I think, by another, during that process, as I recall.
Oh.
The city does have some pretty robust, uh, screening and buffering standards, um, that, you know, we have to abide by as part of the development. So I'm sure at the moment, right, with, with construction, things are, are looking a little better out there. But, um, you know, part of that, that development includes a, a pretty comprehensive, you know, vegetation plan, uh, for surrounding that, that building. That, you know, eventually will provide a good screen of, of that building. It's, it's a relatively tall structure in the end. But because of the height of that structure, we actually had to beef up that buffering standard even more, um, and the proximity to the property line. So there is a, a pretty comprehensive, as I said, vegetation screening buffering plan for that section between the building and the Birchwood Drive kind of property lines. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Chip.
Of course.
Okay, uh, any other additional public comments, questions? I don't see anyone else on Zoom raising their hands. So I'm gonna close this to public comments. Uh, before we go to motions on standards, any more concerns or questions from board members? And seeing none, um, I would go to the standard review on this project, uh, which starts with part one. Um, requiring the project to meet section one sixty-five dash one twenty-six, uh, which is minor subdivision standards. Can I have a motion on item one? Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibit two, the project meets the requirements for land development code section one oh five dash one two six F one regarding compliance with state of Maine guidelines for subdivision approval contained in thirty dash A M R S A, section four forty four point four.
Four four zero four.
Yep.
Thank you. Member Jonas, you have a second?
Chair, I have a second with the correction that is, um, development code is section one sixty-five dash one twenty-six F one.
Number brush. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I have a motion. I have a second from member Jonas. And a roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Uh, moving on to item two of part one, can I have a motion on item two? Member Boucher?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on exhibit two, the project meets the requirements of land development code section one sixty-five dash one twenty-six F six regarding the plat containing all information regarded, uh, required in, uh, section one sixty-five dash one two six D one through eight.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Hayes, thank you. And a roll call vote on item two. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Uh, so that's unanimous approval of the items one and two in part one. Moving on to part two, the project is required to meet, uh, section one sixty-five one fourteen of land development approval standards. Can I have a motion on that item? Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on the findings made in parts one of section four of this document, as well as exhibits two and eleven, the project satisfies the requirements of land development code section one sixty-five dash one fourteen A regarding subdivisions.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Brush, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous approval of part two, which moves us on to a decision. Can I have a motion on the decision? Member Hayes?
I move the board finds that the project meets the requirements for a land development permit for a minor subdivision modification and therefore grants the land development permit for the proposed project.
Excellent. Thank you. A second on this one. Member Jonas, thank you. Roll call vote on the decision. Number Boucher? Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Uh, so unanimous approval of all items and the decision, which means the, uh, land development permit is approved. Uh, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Happy holidays. And so that takes us on to, uh, the last item, the last, uh, land development permit application, which is a major site development plan for construction of two greenhouses and associated parking located at three twenty Beaumont Road, uh, which is map lot R thirty-eight dash zero zero three in the urban industry district. The agent is Plymouth Engineering, Keith, Keith Ewing. The applicant is Hydrogenics Incorporated, and the owner is Beaumont Inc. Uh, before the applicant comes up, uh, staff, I would like to note that staff has indicated the completeness of this application and that it is ready for board review. The fees are documented and paid. Uh, applicant's standing is confirmed. Although I have a question on this one. Uh, it was, it's probably more for staff, uh, but I just felt as though the applicant, uh, what's this called? An O A A form?
Yeah.
Uh, just really wasn't filled out. Do you happen to have it where you can look at it? I mean, it's, it, number one, it doesn't say the project. It does say the location. It says the property owner and the property owner's signature. It doesn't say the applicant or the applicant's signature, or the agent or the agent's number. Um, even the date's not on there.
Yeah, I mean, it did have the owner's signature, I think.
It does.
And so since it was submitted by the applicant, um, we didn't really press on that, and especially since the project had already been approved. Was another reason. But you, you can ask them to provide that if you would like.
I would like to ask that the O A A form be complete, completed as a condition of the approval.
Okay.
Okay. And we can add that at the end.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, well, actually, I should add it now because it's part of the completeness discussion. Uh, does the board have any other comments of completeness of the application or conflicts of interest? No? Okay. If not, I would like a motion on the completeness, uh, which is, you know, in the procedural background, but I would like to have a condition added that the O A A form be filled out, uh, completely, um, before.
I think before any further permits are issued by code enforcement. Makes sense.
Before further permits issued by code enforcement. About that. Who wants to? Member Boucher, can I get his hand up first? Oh, you know, Boucher?
You can go ahead. I'm happy to, but I. I move that the application was being completed on December fifteen, twenty twenty-four. The applicant paid all applicable fees. See exhibit three. The proposed project is a major site development with the condition that the O A A form is completed before any, um, permits are, are granted for the project.
From the code office.
Oh, excuse me, by the code office. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Do I have a second on that? Number Brush, thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
Uh, and the chair votes yes. Uh, so we have, uh, application completeness approved. And so I would ask the applicant or their representative to come on up, um, and provide us with a summary of the project.
Good afternoon. My name's Keith Ewing from Plymouth Engineering. So this is an approved project that was completed through the process in May of twenty twenty-one. Code enforcement has requested that we come before you because they're still working on the second building, uh, to request an extension. And that's why that A A form hasn't completed because it was initiated by code enforcement. I didn't realize it hadn't been completed. The owner is, the owner of the property is here tonight as well as my client. And we're looking to extend the project for another two years.
Sure. Thank you, Keith. Uh, stick with us if you would for a second. Um, staff, have any other comments on this one?
Just wanna kind of, um, jump on that and clarify that, um, in the code, if a project isn't completed within two years, it does have to come back to you for approval. Um, and the main purpose of that is just in case the code did change, um, relevant to, you know, this particular land use type within those two years. In this case, it hasn't changed. And so really, you're just looking at the same, um, site plan as was looked at in twenty twenty-one with no other code changes. And then also just wanna reiterate, um, the water district condition in the decision letter, um, I don't believe the applicant, you might want to ask applicant for clarification that we hadn't received notice that had been filed.
The applicant has finished working with the code, um, sorry, the water district as of today.
Okay.
They have approved his meter and he's applied on his fees.
Which would satisfy the condition that we have in our standards.
Um, it would still be good to have something for the water district.
I understand, but it wasn't completed until the end of today.
Yeah. So maybe just make the condition, um, assuming that we need that.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Keith. Uh, so what member questions of Mr. Ewing or staff before we go to any public comment? I mean, it sounds pretty simple. It's mostly just an extension of time, really, is all we're really looking at in this issue. The water meter for the second building, which sounds like that's been pretty much resolved as well at this point, so. Okay, uh, I will look for public comments and see no public. Yes, sir. Come on up. Introduce yourself.
Uh, Lee Stanley, I'm a neighbor. I'm not even sure that it's his facility, but, uh, you know, we live next door and I also have a business next door. Business, I don't really care. But you get a pretty strong odor from time to time. And I'm not, I have to listen to you guys talk. I don't think this is probably even the place. But code enforcement might not be him because there's other grow houses up there. And sometimes it's very strong. So, um, I'm saying that I think that the code, it's one seventy-seven point one or something, talks about marijuana houses. The city says you gotta control the odor. Doesn't say how to do it. It says you have to do it and you shouldn't smell it on an adjacent property. My wife really detests smelling it. So when the letter comes, she says, go and talk for a few minutes and, uh, I'm hoping to talk to my neighbor too. So, um, and again, I don't know that it's them because I know there's other grow operations up there. But it's, you know, this summer was worse. If you ask my mother-in-law, it was much worse. So on some days. So if that's in your bucket, I'd like you to consider it when you are approving land use permits for this type of operation. If it's not in your bucket, then we should be talking to somebody else.
True, sure. Thank you. Um, member Boucher?
Well, any anecdotal feedback on what conditions, like weather conditions? Is it windy days, sunny days, like hot days or?
You know, you can, yesterday you could smell it. So I don't know. You know, you could smell it. My, my mother-in-law comes up in the summertime and a couple of times, you know, she's like, you know, it's, it's an issue. She's sitting on the patio trying to read and, and, you know. So I don't know if it's, you know, when the two points up and the temperatures are falling, or if it's low pressure, high pressure. I don't know. I don't know. It has anything to do with his facility because there's other ones there, but I know you could smell it and it's very strong sometimes and other times not so much. So.
I was gonna ask it. Follow-up was, was it consistent? You said sometimes.
Sometimes you don't smell it at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't smell it at all for two weeks. And then you take a walk and you're like, wow, you know, or you step out the back door and it's like, wow. So.
Sir, if you could just wait, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, you know.
You, you referenced a code. I, I mean, I don't have the code memorized, so.
It's one seventy, one seventy-one, I think.
Does it specifically say?
It talks about marijuana, uh, medical marijuana houses, grow operations. It talks about retail operations. There's, I think it's two separate ones. It looks like it's been changed a few times. But, you know, I did look at the plans that you guys posted online. It doesn't show that there's any sort of system there, any way of taking care of it. The city code says, the city's not telling you how to do it, but there's filters and we're asking you to buy the best technology to do something about the odor so that you can't smell it on an adjacent parcel. Um, uses another word besides parcel. But, uh, you know, it, it obviously, I, I know some folks have tried to rent my properties for that and I've always said no, but usually they come and talk about how they're gonna take care of the odor and don't worry about it. And so, you know, I, I just know it's an issue and now it's an issue for me because I'm told it's an issue for me.
Sure.
It's chapter one seventy-seven, um, and that does fall outside of the land development code, which the planning board has purged you over. So it does sound like a code enforcement concern. So I would maybe reach out to them. Yeah.
I thought that's what you were gonna say after I said.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I mean, this is, this is where to do it though, because this is where we take public comments. So it's good to get it out there.
Yeah.
And certainly, uh, you know, uh, I would, I would encourage you, and I will ask you to come up so that you can join into this conversation because it looks like you want to, but, you know, I would encourage you to go to the code enforcement office and ask them what steps would be the next steps. I would assume that they would know, you know, how to, how to proceed from there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start right with the neighbor first, but
Yeah.
again, I hadn't met him. I know Dick, but I hadn't met, you know, I didn't know whose property it was and I didn't think knocking on grow houses was to wait to hit your neighbors. And there's some other ones out there, but I'm not sure which ones they are. So.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, would you like?
I, I was gonna say that.
Yeah, don't, come on up first and then, then introduce yourself and carry on.
My name is Simon Rumi. Um, I'm running the operation, uh, at that greenhouse that we are asking for the extension for. He said he smelled it this week. Uh, we haven't had any plants in it, uh, probably for two months now. Did multiple grow places in that area, but, uh, if, if it bothers you in any way, if you smell it. But if it bothers you in any way, if you smell it, please come over and, you know, see if it's coming from us in the future. If there's any way we can do carbon filters or anything like that to our ventilation, we're more than welcome to add this to the plan.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you speaking. Okay. Seeing no other public comment at this point, I will close the public comment. Before we go to motions on the standards, do board members have any other concerns here? If not, and seeing none, I would look for us to go to the standards, Part One, which requires the project to meet Articles Two through Articles Twelve. I would look for motion on item one of Part One. Member Boucher?
Mr. Chair, I find the board... I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-33's requirements regarding filling grading and earthmoving activities and subsection 165-33-1's requirements regarding erosion and sediment control best practices.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Jonas, thank you. Roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item two. Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Eleven, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-72 requiring adequate parking spaces, including handicapped accessible spaces, Section 165-73 regarding parking area locations, setbacks, and screening, and Section 165-74 regarding minimum design standards for surface parking and parking lot design.
Thank you. Member Brush, do you second this? Second. Your hand up as well. Yep. Thank you. And so roll call vote on this. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item three. Number Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Eleven, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-76 requiring loading space, Section 165-77 regarding the loading space size, and Section 165-78 regarding general loading space requirements.
Thank you. A second on this one. Member Boucher, thank you. Roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item four, please. Number Hayes?
I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Six through Ten, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-79 and 80 requiring adequate connection to necessary utilities, including public water and sewer when possible, with the condition that the applicant provides any necessary paperwork to the Bangor Water District and that a separate water line is run to the second building along with its own backflow and meter, and the water line is inspected by the Water District prior to backfilling it.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Member Brush, you got a comment?
Yes, question. Would this be the motion that would entertain the condition that...
Correct. The condition we had talked about earlier, which they have really, in essence, already fulfilled, as I understand, today. Yep. Makes sense? A second on this motion. Member Jonas?
Mr. Chair, I would like to second this based on documentation of the communication with the Bangor Water District.
So you're just asking that...
Confirmation of...
There be confirmation?
Yes. With that... Yeah. The condition just...
With that condition?
The confirmation that's added.
We need to re-motion? We don't need to re-motion, do we? We're just adding to the condition, right?
Yeah, we'll add it to the condition.
And I mean, it kind of says that in a sense, any condition to provide necessary paperwork, but we're asking that that be confirmed.
We're recognizing that we heard that it was, but we haven't seen documentation of this thing.
Yeah. Okay. And that's fine, Mr. Ewing, right? That's kind of part of the process as standard anyway. Thank you. Okay. So I have a motion with the condition. I have a second, including a documentation just showing that this work is actually completed. And so now I'm looking to roll call vote on this. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So approval of item four. Can I have a motion on item five? Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Eleven, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied the Land Development Code Section 165-81 requiring appropriate outdoor lighting.
Thank you. And a second from Member Boucher. Thank you. Roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item six, please. Member Boucher?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied the Land Development Code Section 165-82 requiring adequate fire protection.
Thank you. And a second on this one from Member Jonas. And a roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on seven, please. Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied the Land Development Code Section 165-83 requiring adequate electrical services.
Thank you. And a second on this one. Member Hayes? Thank you. And a roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item eight, please. Number Hayes?
I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied the Land Development Code Section 165-84 requiring provisions for surface water and storm drainage.
Thank you. Member Brush, your hand was going up. Do you second this?
Second.
Yep. Thank you. And a roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item nine. Member Brush?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied the Land Development Code Section 165-86 requiring compliance with sewer regulations.
Thank you. A second on this one. Member Hayes? Thank you. And a roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Number Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So unanimous approval of items one through nine in Part One. Moving on to Part Two. This requires the project to meet site development standards under Article 19. Can I have a motion on Part Two? Member Boucher?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Eleven, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Section 165-35 of the Land Development Code regarding hyphenates, building and load standards, floor area ratio, previous service ratio, and property values.
Thank you. And a second on this one from Member Jonas. Roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous approval of Part Two. Part Three requires the project to meet Section 165-96, which is the urban industry district standards. And there are two standards here. Can I have a motion on item one? Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on the findings made in Parts One and Two of Section Four of this document, and based on Exhibit Two, the project meets the requirements of Section 165-96B for permitted use within the urban industry district.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Hayes? Thank you. And a roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item two. Member Hayes?
I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Eleven, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Section 165-96C-10 of the Land Development Code regarding requirements for marijuana uses in relation to building location, distance to other building uses, and connection to utilities.
Thank you. And Member Brush, a second on that one. Thank you. And roll call vote. Number Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that's unanimous approval of the two items on Part Three. Moving on to Part Four, which requires the project to meet Section 165-114, which is the land development standards. Can I have a motion on item one? Member Boucher?
Mr. Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Eleven, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied the requirements of Land Development Code 165... Excuse me, Section 165-114B through C regarding the proposed parking and loading layout and the proposed access drives from the site to any other right-of-way being arranged in a reasonable and safe configuration, including provision for safe pedestrian travel to all onsite uses.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Jonas? Thank you. Roll call vote on item one. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Can I have a motion on item two? Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-114D's requirement for preventing adverse effects from stormwater runoff and ensuring adequate capacity of stormwater collection systems to handle runoff from the development.
Thank you. And Member Brush, you're either scratching your ear or seconding your motions. Thank you for a second. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Member Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion on item three of Part Four. Member Hayes?
I move the board finds that based on Exhibits Two, Eleven, and Fifteen, the applicant satisfied Land Development Code Section 165-114G's requirements for building location and setbacks.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this one? Member Jonas? Thank you. Roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
Yes.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have unanimous approval of Part Four, One through Three, which leads us to a decision. Can I have a motion on the decision itself? Member Jonas?
Chair, I move the board finds that the project meets the requirements for a land development permit for a major site development, and therefore grants the land development permit for the proposed project, with the condition noted in Section Four, Part One, finding number four of this document.
Thank you. Do I have a second on this? Member Hayes? Thank you. And a roll call vote. Member Boucher?
Yes.
Number Brush?
He is.
Number Hayes?
Yes.
Member Jonas?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have unanimous approval of all items, including the decision. The permit is approved. And so, gentlemen, I would expect you to get back to the board office and find out the next steps going forward, but it's like you would proceed from here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So we now move on to what's left of other business. Plan Officer Collette has included, as we said last meeting, I'll hide them on here for thoughts on Land Development Code and land use planning.
Can we...
Can we clear?
Wait. Yeah. Go ahead. Thank you. So, you know, we're gonna keep bringing this up because this keeps being worth talking about. And I think at this point, and Anya, maybe you can speak a little bit more to this, but we're done the public outreach?
Correct, yes.
Yesterday?
Uh, no, it was last week.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, Anya had done a lot of public outreach on this as she had told us a couple of meetings ago, as I recall. And so you might have questions on those things or want information on those things, or just to discuss that more, or you may want to discuss that more.
Yeah, I will note, I'm gonna bring a memo to the Business and Accountants Committee in January with a summary of all the feedback. I'm still kind of compiling everything right now. And then I will also make a note to bring it to you all as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
And also, I know you had presented to the committee last night some information on code changes or code information, which I thought might be useful for this group. So I wonder if you want to share that or briefly talk about that? Or maybe you don't want to wait? I don't know.
Yeah, about U R D one and zoning. Yeah, so it was just really to provide some background information on the city zoning, but mainly in like the urban neighborhoods and U R D one and two.
That's what's a nonconforming property, which is a good thing to discuss.
Yeah. So the background I gave was, you know, prior to the nineteen nineties, the urban neighborhoods kind of developed organically with multifamily and single family mixed in together. And then in the nineties, you know, they kind of did this broad brush of U R D one over this huge area and made a lot of the multifamilies nonconforming. And so that is causing some issues now for people that might want to expand. There is also the separate issue of people adding units illegally after the nineties. And that's kind of a lot of the zone changes that you're seeing come in because they're going to the code office and realizing this was added illegally. And in order to keep operating it, we have to give the zone change. But, you know, you don't typically, when you do rezoning, you don't typically want to create nonconformities. You want to reduce nonconformities. So they kind of did the opposite of what they were supposed to do. And so that's kind of like what we're trying to, what one of the goals of the land development code update is to fix, is to try to minimize nonconformities to the extent possible. And so the other purpose of my memo to bed was to clear up some confusion about U R D one because I had said, you know, I think that it wasn't really considered single family anymore, but purely because after L D two thousand and three, it allowed you to have up to four units in the zone with that minimum lot size requirement. Some people still feel it is single family. I think because there's that lot size restriction. But I think it's really just like a matter of opinion. There's just some confusion from some people. They thought that U R D one no longer existed, which isn't true. It does exist. It just has a higher lot size requirement than like U R D two for those four units, so.
Number Brush?
Is there any sentiment to eliminate U R D one?
I don't think so. You know, I don't think counselors need to do that. I think they're open to changing U R D one and maybe making it smaller. But I don't think that they want to get rid of it completely. I don't think that publicness really wants that. What I'm kind of gathering from conversations we've had and then with council and the public is there is this kind of band of U R D one, you know, kind of on the outskirts of the urban neighborhoods that are still really single family. They're all single family. And then as you start getting closer to downtown, it becomes more and more like more multifamily mixed in. So I think it might make sense to keep U R D one in that kind of band, but maybe change, change the zoning as you get closer so it would be more like a transition. But I don't know. It's something that, you know, we'll discuss with the consultants and see what their suggestion is. But that's kind of the feeling I'm getting, so. Yeah. But, I mean, let me know your thoughts.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, this is what drives some of the stuff that we see. Yeah, right? And it's annoying in some ways, having all this nonconforming stuff. I feel that just, you know, the flavor of where we're at today versus the flavor of, say, in the nineties, when everything got sort of broad swipe U R D one, was that in the nineties, there was more of a feeling of, let's protect the family environment and the neighborhoods. And now there's this desire to create more housing so that we can take care of those that are not finding adequate housing.
Well, the nineties, still in that time, was just an extension of like kind of the suburban sprawl kind of mindset. And I think there is a misconception that a single family equates to family life. But you can have family life in multifamily too. I think it's more of a way, more about how you design the development and how you design the neighborhood and the streets more than it is the use itself, so. Because there are families that live in multifamily apartments.
Yeah, and Chair?
Yes.
I would also point out that a lot of what we're seeing with the change from U R D one to U R D two and the other types of things that we're seeing are not necessarily design, but kind of a redesign, right? Because they're mostly redeveloping in existing structures, just providing additional opportunity for growth in population in the areas. So it's kind of a redesign and more of a building of extended community.
Member Busha?
I would assume that U R D one has its history in trying to protect housing value in single-family neighborhoods. And it's like fundamentally a conservative thing to maintain the housing value. And also to sort of self-select a tax base. Sometimes it seems like oriented to controlling population and like service the population. I remember living in another region. I was living in Massachusetts, and there were certain towns that you really could not build anything. You had to have so many acres before you could build anything bigger than a single-family house. And it was done to maintain like a small school population. And so that they would still have a high ratio of tax income to student. And so they could have these wonderful school programs like that. And so I think there's an element of that that might be a play historically, maybe not.
Well, it, I mean, yeah, it depends on the community, but there are definitely cases of communities limiting density and limiting things to single family so they keep their population lower and they don't have the population density, which kind of presents a problem for Bangor because our population is declining and we are struggling to find workers because of the housing shortage. So you kind of see all these things playing out now. And it's not just in Bangor, but in many communities. Kind of this interrelatedness between the zoning that has created, really, not saying zoning has full responsibility for a housing crisis, but it's played into it a lot. And so you are finding this housing shortage in many places, and it is leading to issues with people trying to work places and they can't find a place to live, so.
I can't afford.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Now, I know, if I can continue.
Yeah.
I know sometimes there's, a property would be granted a certain amount of bedrooms based off like water usage. I'm trying to recall the specifics about this. And I'm trying to mesh like the need for certain houses that are basically duplexes, where it's one floor, one unit and one floor at the other unit. It looks like a single-family house. It would fit into a neighborhood of single-family houses, but it has the flexibility of breaking up into. So the building is being used more fully, rather than a family of two in a, you know, a four-bedroom house. We have two families of three in a four-bedroom house, if that makes sense. Which I think gets to the density. Where I'm going ultimately with this, I'll just break right to it. But we have this U R D one band, and there are a lot of duplexes in there, like scattered throughout still. And how to deal with the facts on the ground and provide some sort of flexibility in a U R D zone, a lower-density residential zone that still has some of those properties, just not all properties like that. Because I think you're talking about downtown and in the first, you know, the initial perimeter around downtown. High density, it's a lot of three-unit, four-unit buildings. And then as you go out, expect fewer of them. And then you get to that, the band outside of it, where it'd be primarily one unit, you know, single-family houses, but with the... I wonder if there's some way to provision it around density rather than the strictness of the U R D one versus U R D two, which is say, this is the growth zone. This is not the growth zone. It's a lot of what we're doing with the comprehensive plan rather than strictly through zoning.
But that's, that's what we've done, right? With L D two thousand and three.
Kind of.
Even if you have this band of U R D one,
Yeah.
you're not going to get rid of L D two thousand and three as state law, so we have to do that. So if the square footage is there, you'd still be able to make, if you had a, you know, a zoned U R D property, you'd still be able to make, say, another unit in that home or an A D U beyond or something like that. But as long as it still meets the standards that we've written currently in the code.
Does that, does it answer?
It's more of a thought that I'm putting out there and just spur discussion. Because it, U R D, yeah. So that's talking about an auxiliary unit, not necessarily duplexes, like cutting houses into two flats. I think that that's most commonly what's being done. Is that rather than building the tiny house in the backyard, they're wanting to cut the house into two sections. And maybe that's not something that we want to encourage for one reason or the other. But it seems like that is what we're looking to grandfather in a lot of the times, is because that's what was done historically and still being done today.
So are you saying you feel like the allowances should be the same for creating another full unit as it is for creating an A D U?
Maybe based off of acreage? I don't know. It's a, it's a fine point because you want to balance the existing neighborhoods wanting to protect their, presumably protect their property value. And they bought into an area that didn't have a lot of multi-units. And so you'd like to keep them, you'd like to honor that and see people being able to know what they are expecting down the road when they buy a house. So I...
But if you take like L D two thousand and three, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. But if you have over five thousand square feet, you can have another unit
Yeah.
in the building.
Well, you have to have ten thousand minimum.
Is it ten thousand?
Ten thousand minimum, yeah.
Okay. So if you have ten thousand.
So the problem is?
What's five thousand give you?
Just one and U R D one with an A D U, which I think is what Jonathan's saying. It's like kind of unfair, or it doesn't really make sense because like if you're on a five thousand square foot lot, you can have an A D U, but you can't add a full unit like to an existing structure.
Right. Which is kind of what you talked about when we reviewed last time. You said it seems like it's the same if you have an A D U or you have two units inside, yet that's not allowed one way, but it is allowed another way.
It's just, it seems sometimes like it privileges certain architecture. Like if you just add this extra box to the back of the building, that's okay. But if you, if you want to give a floor to it, then that's not okay. And sometimes...
There is, there's probably always going to be that. But I agree that, you know, I had that frustration with L D two thousand and three when it first came to us. Because if you have an empty lot, you can have four units as long as you have square footage to do it. But if you have a house on that lot, you can only have three, correct?
It seems very prescriptive and almost arbitrary.
Yeah.
But I can understand. If there is some sort of case to be made that it's doing it one way or the other ensures the vibrancy of the neighborhood or something, there's some tangible value to be gained from doing it in that way of constraining how people can can expand on their property, then I can be convinced that just, it doesn't necessarily seem like that.
Other comments?
Just want to address real quick
Yes.
the common misconception I get from, a lot from the public, and you kind of mentioned it too, that having multifamily decreases your property value. Because there's no evidence that having that next to you decreases your property value.
I think that's a historically perpetuated, and it goes back to even, I think, eras around redlining and things go way back in bigger cities and in other areas. I think that's sort of where the misconception comes from. And there is also frequently an association between multi-units and socioeconomic standing.
Member Jonas?
Just to reiterate something I said last meeting, I think it's a bigger detriment to my property value to have a vacant unit next door than to have a multi-unit down the street.
Yeah.
Just, I, I... And I, there's something very in my head. I'll think about it and bring it up next time about. But, you know, I grew up in the mill towns of Western Maine and northern New Hampshire. And, you know, tenement buildings or four-floor buildings with a family on each floor were the norm, not the exception. And so as we move into a service-based economy like we have here in Bangor, to me, you know, two halves of one bigger house that used to be a single family that now might be two families is not that untenable to me. It's very nor, it feels very normal to me because I'm used to that.
Yeah, thank you. I feel as though, you know, I, I mean, I sound like this sometimes, but I'm in favor of more units. Like we own a big house and I, we're trying to get an apartment into it. But I would really like to chop it up even more, which I'm, there's only so much I can do. But the struggle for me, and I think this is probably the struggle for a lot of people with Bangor in general, is we love the city, so we want the city character just stay the same while we do these things to create more housing so people have access to more housing and less expensive housing. That seems to be the trick of it, is to find that avenue to get there without having things become a mess.
I think one of the things that I have kind of gotten one way or another from people kind of talking about their neighborhoods, green space is important to everybody. So maybe we look at maybe even reducing our maximum pervious ratios so we make sure we maintain that green space in our neighborhoods. Because like you've all pointed out, you can and people want to cut up an existing house, not necessarily add on to it, but cut up one of these huge existing homes into multiple units. And that's kind of what people are prevented from doing. And that's, I think, what has happened in the past. And I think it also, being able to do that, it creates more flexibility for like maybe older homeowners who need the income from their house. They want to create another unit. And there are, other communities are adding a lot of flexibility to developers or homeowners that do want to do that. They don't want to add on to the building. They just want to add units inside the building. And that can help us preserve that green space. So I think there's, you know, different things we can look at. And I think besides the green space aspect of it, the appearance of the buildings also matters. And that's also what we heard from people is, you know, if a multi-unit, if a duplex or a three-unit looked a certain way, they would be more okay with it. And they pointed to the pre-approved building plans a lot.